2018 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under Chairman's announcements, and Ramona is not here as of yet, correct?
Right.
So...
Well, we have the...
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, in the interest of maybe potentially waiting for Ramona, I'd like to bring up Ethan Harper, an Eagle Scout who contributed greatly to a gem in our town. And invited him to come forward and kind of share with us his work at Soldiers Field.
I thought you were going to say that you raked Mr. Bonin's yard because he likes to refer to that as a gem.
No, bit harder than that.
All right. So, tell us about the project.
Well, we went to replace the bleachers and stain them red like the ones by Third Base on the first base side of the large field at Soldiers Field. We were going to remove a wall to make it the same height and put in a net, but there was a wire running along it. My leaders didn't really like the idea of handling that. Didn't really have the acquaintance, so I'm sure they'd be willing to do it as like another project, but that would have to be out of the way.
Mm-hmm.
And I, yeah, I didn't know how we'd do that. I didn't even realize that was there until we actually showed up the day of the project. Hadn't noticed it before. But the project itself went well. It was kind of cold, but I was able to stain it in a garage with wood stove running.
That always helps.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a lot, a lot easier that way.
So now, you're going for your Eagle Scout?
Yeah, this was my project. I needed to, this is the last thing I needed to get done.
Excellent. And when's your board review set up?
Well, now that I have everything signed, I'm going to figure that out.
Excellent. And you're troop 316?
134.
Oh, you're with 134. You're a Tony's troop.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent.
Yeah, I noticed Dan Side coming back. That was nice to see him back.
Yeah? Yeah, we were glad to get him back. He keeps him out of hanging around downtown, so.
Yeah.
And it's a couple hours that his mom and I get a break from 20 minute questions.
Yeah.
It works out. Well, good. No, thank you very much for the...
Josh, Tim, how does it look good?
Yeah, it looks fantastic. You know, the, the red is a nice contrast to the, the green that, that is the walls at Soldiers. It makes it, you know, it's a nice, pays homage to, to the Eagles, to the Boy Scout, their colors, but also has a little bit of a Fenway Park looking feel to it, too, so.
Excellent.
Those bleachers, you know, probably hadn't been replaced in 20 years.
Some of them actually looked like they were replaced, just because they were broken.
Yeah.
Those ones actually gave us a harder time because they were newer, removing the nails from them. We actually had one of the scouts bring a power saw because some of the boards at the bottom, we couldn't just pull out. So we just cut them up in half. Well, the leaders did. The scouts can't handle power tools.
And just, just so I don't think the town or the baseball program is sending you off to go electrocute yourself, that wire is an old scoreboard wire. It's dead.
Oh.
There's nothing.
Well, I didn't know that.
For the fact, you're here, so congratulations.
All right, well, you were never in any danger.
Yeah, I just, you were never in any danger, but...
I blame my leaders for that one.
It was a prudent call not to, not to touch that, so.
He was hoping for hazardous duty on that.
Yeah, but the facility, you know, looks great and we certainly helped lead the town and the baseball programs very grateful for it.
Ethan, do you have a picture of yourself with, with the...
I don't have pictures of myself with the bleachers. I do have pictures of the bleachers on my phone.
Can you email them to me?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I'd like to get with you in, in it also.
All right, I can go down and take a picture.
All right.
When it's lighter out.
It's on the website, my email address.
Okay.
Might be a good thing on the webpage, that's the different Eagle Scout projects that we've done over the years.
Great minds, they go right.
I'm already doing it.
Already doing it, okay.
If you checked it out, it's already there.
I just see if I can get some of the Eagle Scouts back. Yeah, because there's like the benches by the library. I know a scout did that, too. So if we want to add some more Eagle Scout projects, I'm, there's a kiosk at Wollam Lake, too. I might be helping with that one.
Ethan Girdens.
Yeah, Ethan, yep.
Yep. And I believe that the park right across over there is Eagle Scout project as well.
I already got that. That one I got. There's a few I know about them. There's a lot I don't know about.
The sign and the basketballs.
I can't get, I've been trying to get a picture of, of him. I've contacted his mother and she said that she was going to try and get a picture. I haven't heard anything yet.
So, no, we appreciate the work and I'm sure it came out quite well. I don't get down to Soldiers as often as Mr. Bonin does. I think that's his home away from home.
It's home.
It's home.
It's home.
So, he's living in the dugout, I guess, but, but thank you very much. Much appreciated. Do you need anything from us, like Mr. Bonin's already signed it?
Uh, no, I think I have all the signatures I need. I hope. I'm probably going to get told I missed something, though. That tends to happen.
If you did, and there's anything that the board, that you need from the board, just let Suzanne know and one of us will make sure that you get it.
Okay.
So, and good luck on your board review. Hope you get it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Two?
Ramona's here.
Oh. And next on Chairman's announcements is we have a, Ramona, if you could come up? If that's okay?
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
So, we actually have, unfortunately, we missed you at the volunteers' dinner.
Ah, well, as it happens, it was my birthday and I had every intention of coming here and I walked in the house and all my kids were there going, "Surprise!"
Well, it's your birthday, you do what you want with that day. Nobody's going to give you a hard time about it.
So...
It was a very good event that was put on by the, by the town employees and for 36 years with the Simon Fairfield Public Library.
Yeah.
And you're finally stepping down, retiring, and all done. Are you sure you don't have another, like, four or five in there?
No. No.
So, well...
I will fully support it in other ways.
I'm sure you will. I can say that on behalf of the town and in this board, thank you very much for the level of dedication that you've shown to the library and into the town in general. I'm very pleased to, actually, if I can pass it down, hand that over to you. It's not much, but we have to keep an eye on the budget.
Yeah, I don't want to go through that again.
No.
Oh, wow. This is beautiful. Thank you so much.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I hope you enjoy your retirement from that part of public service.
Uh, that part, yeah. I'm still a friend of the library.
But there's various other boards and committees that I'm sure would be happy to have you, sitting on them at any given point in time.
His openings aren't found, Tom.
Yeah.
On what?
Conservation's always looking for people.
I don't know anything about conservation.
Well, we had a previous candidate that didn't either.
You don't have any preconceived ideas.
Oving Reddewon.
On that note, thank you very much for Ramona. Have a good rest of the evening and Merry Christmas.
You, too.
Okay. How much trouble did I get myself in there? None?
You're going to give it a whirl.
I gotta work harder. All right. Is there anybody here for anything that's not currently on our agenda? And seeing as the only person here is our police chief and Ramona's leaving and the administrator's son hiding in the back, I'll take that as no. So the first agenda item that we have is approve all other license renewals and possible votes.
In your agenda packet are listings of all the different licenses and, and back of each type of license, I gave you the checklist so that you could see that they do have all the information that they're supposed to have. I did, as part of the renewal process, I always contact the tax collector to make sure that everyone has paid their local taxes because the board did vote to, to approve mass general law that says that you may deny a license if they have not paid their local taxes.
And everybody's in good standing?
Everyone except for one. We do have one license holder. Typically, if it's, if they're in a building that they're renting, we don't, we don't hold, hold it. This person is out of his house and he does owe taxes, so, and it's a couple of years worth. So we can, you can, if you choose, approve it contingent upon getting current and I will hold off the li, hold, getting the license to him until that time.
Has he been notified regarding the tax standing? I'm assuming you would have.
Oh, I'm, yeah. They get, they get notices.
So I think I'd probably be more inclined to take his application and put it off to the side.
Right.
And then we can vote and approve on that once his taxes are up to date. Does anybody disagree with that? Something's right with that?
All right, he's pulled out.
I would entertain a motion to approve the other licenses.
I'll make a motion to approve the other licenses as presented by Suzanne.
Seconded. It was made by Mike and seconded by Dave. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to sign them during executive session?
Right, aye.
During executive session?
Yeah, it makes more sense. Second reading of code red emergency notification policy. Any change of heart on the chairman getting launch codes on that?
No.
No? All right, then. That was a resounding, you didn't even think about that.
I was thinking about how you mentioned to me that my predecessor, in the spirit of Neville Chamberlain, might have already given you the codes, but I suppose that makes the chief Winston Churchill and me Roosevelt because the answer is still no.
Yes, I think he would have succumbed to my will, but no. I give you both credit.
One second.
You're both standing fast. You guys have moxie, I admire that. So no changes to the code or policy at all?
No, sir.
All right. So we can move past that one? You got something, Mr. Vice Chairman?
I have nothing yet.
I didn't think so.
I'm waiting.
Oh, all right. Resource room upgrades and possible votes?
Mr. Chairman, I ask that you pass over this again. I'll, I'll explain to you what's going on. This media room requires upgrades to the sound system as well as to the feeds for the cable committee. The entire job has gone out to bid and resulted in a successful low bidder who had a, you know, very nice narrative and an intelligent design for the room. We want to work with cable to divvy up the costs, so those items that are absolutely essential for their purposes, we hope that they will pay for. And those things that will change the room that they don't need but will make for better meetings in this room in terms of the speakers, so anyone sitting in the back row can hear and you can hear them, that would be the board's responsibility. This is your building and we'll have to come up with budget for that. We're still ironing out exactly, so we've asked the vendor to break out very specific items and score it to who should be responsible for what. I'm not inclined to go along with the 50-50 split. I just think that that isn't exactly how this works. I think a lot of what is needed is really needed for the broadcast. What we need to do more than anything is eliminate some of the speakers that are right over your head because we're getting gain on the microphones. But we should still be, it's still going to be a couple thousand dollars for that, but it will make the room much more workable when we do have a sizable crowd for whatever reason.
I mean, for you, it's probably going to take a few meetings in between now and then. Like whenever it's, you guys have ironed out the details, we'll throw it as an agenda item again.
Yeah, so we, we tried to rush them along today because they really had kind of a long time. We tell, yeah, we can get a vote tonight if you hurry. We still haven't gotten it, so we'll not put it back on the agenda again until they come, come forward with it. But I just wanted to explain it to you since it's been here twice, what's going on.
No, fair enough. All right, well, that was easy. Brings us to the minutes for the December 4, 2018 meeting.
Well, can I just rewind slightly? Northbridge, there was recently an article about Northbridge Cable having an issue with their funding. I spoke with the cable administrator, Pat, about the potential impact happening in Douglas and, you know, with the lack of local newspaper coverage, I think it sets a dangerous precedent if we were to actually get to a position where the public airing of our meetings don't take place. I just want to go on record and probably garner support for maintaining whatever services that are being provided regardless of what the feds decide to do.
So, as you may or may not know, the cable committee in Douglas has passed a resolution and sent a letter for the comment period on, so FCC has a rulemaking that is essentially, if it were to pass, would make it very difficult for cable access funding to continue on the same basis as it has to this point. And would, as you say, would really cripple Douglas. And it's a really nice thing to be able to look at the video of every single public body. It's, it's a way for all of us to keep up without having to stay late every single night. It's a way for the citizenry to watch it any time of day they want to watch it. So, it takes the pressure off the minute taker. You know, the minutes can be, they still need to be solid minutes, but if you really are curious, you just scroll to the appropriate point in the video and watch it. So, we brought that to the attention of the, the committee and they've weighed in and I could, if you want me to, prepare a letter of support for your next meeting if you wanted to weigh in on it.
I have to go on record. I would have to recuse myself.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's important, you know, without media here in any way, shape, or form, we haven't seen the telegram in some time, that we do as much as we can to ensure the transparency of local government.
You want the telegram here more, you give me those code red launch codes. We'll have the telegram here a lot.
Just launch codes.
No, I get it.
That's all.
Understood. All right. Anything else? No? How about those minutes for December 4?
I move that we approve the minutes of the December 4 meeting as presented.
I will second. Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You want press, I can get you press. Just saying. All right. Mr. Administrator, your report, sir.
I actually have a lot for you this evening. You mentioned my son is here, 7:15. You guys have been in session for about 17 minutes. He's used to meetings that go on for seven hours and no decisions get made, so he wanted to see how you guys operate as opposed to my immediate past employer.
We can accommodate his past experience.
This is the proper way that the boards run here, unless like Cortez starts getting crazy and then...
That will happen for another hour or so.
Mr. Chairman, the first item I'd like to share is you may notice as you drive by the fire department in Highway Barn, some old equipment lined up. We're trying to clean up the yard and get all of that stuff out of here. We're going to follow the rules for auctioning off items that may have some value. Items that truly had no value at all were brought for scrap and we got at least $200, $250 for those individual items. The checks were brought to Gene and processed. Under Article 2, Section 6 of the bylaws, the board of selectmen must approve the auction. So you won't meet again until January 15th. What I propose doing is announcing the items that we are proposing for auction, advertise it, and not have the auction until January 18th. So you can approve the list on the 15th and take from it or add to it as you see fit, but we still get the word out that we're going to, and guys, you know, whoever's interested can come look at the material and make their assessment what they want to bid for it.
Is it a sealed bid?
It will be a sealed bid, so I don't know what the value of these items were when the town bought them. The bylaw is actually very rigid. It's unnecessarily rigid. If the town paid $2,000 or more at the time that it purchased the items, we must use the sealed auction process, even if they're 10, 15, 20 years old. So, if, if that's a decent plan, then I'll just announce that we have six items so far that we proposed to auction off. And it's actually number one that might generate quite a bit of interest. It's a 1962 Ford pickup fire brush truck. It's a classic car, so a collector or restore, restoration specialist who needs that piece of the bumper or that flashing light might actually give us a pretty decent price for this. The second item's a 2004 Ford Explorer. Item number three is a 2007 Ford E450 ambulance. That's a van. Chassis. Number four is a 1989 Ford L800 Catch Basin Vector truck. Item number five is a 1981 Ford 8000 fire truck that was converted into a sander. Nothing like multitasking. That kind of fits the way we do things in town where the highway guys are the call volunteers and so off you go. And number six is a 1990 GMC box van.
Do all these run?
None of them run selectmen, so the minimum bid for each will be the scrap value of $200. We'll sell it for less than $200. Successful bidders will have to tender a cashier check or money order for the full purchase amount no later than three hours after the auction bids are opened. The vehicles are not in running condition. They are for sale as is. Buyers accept all risk of defect, hidden conditions, damage, wear and tear, and they must remove the purchased item, so they all have to be towed no later than 12 noon one week from the day that the auction bids are opened.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So the ambulance that we'd originally looked at moving in for trade, which was the Ford, isn't it? So I'm surprised that that's not sitting on that list.
I believe it eventually got to wherever it was supposed to go.
Really? Now that's fascinating. Good. All right. Because I wasn't sure if that was still sitting out back.
I don't think so. If it is, it will be on the next list.
Yeah.
These items will be on the webpage?
Yes, this will all be posted on the website and, you know, the key caveat will be the last paragraph, "The board of selectmen will finalize the list of items to be auctioned off in public session Tuesday, January 15th. The town reserves the right to add, combine, and or withdraw any or all of the lots from the auction up to 48 hours before closing the bid period." I think that covers us for purposes of the bylaw. Beautiful, but gets us...
Eight hundred bucks.
Well, no, no less than 1,200 if you accept the...
If we end up with the 800 bucks, we can actually cater the next, like, volunteer appreciation dinner.
Got to ask Gene first.
Let's not.
Also, for, so item number two for your review is, pardon me, added to your packet is a draft intermunicipal agreement to form a joint negotiation and purchase of certain insurance coverages, so a joint purchasing group for purposes primarily of negotiating and purchasing health insurance. The entities that have come together are the towns of Douglas, Milbury, Southbridge, Webster, and the Dudley-Chelton Regional School District, provided, of course, all of the boards with authority agree to enter into the agreement. So this is what the consultant has come forward with, you know, I kind of hinted to you guys, I've actually done more than that. I've briefed you on what we're trying to do here in terms of self-insurance and, you know, being able to get control of our own data and make better decisions about how we structure our health insurance without changing the plan. The key thing is when we're not going to change plan design for our employees, so this will not trigger the need to bargain. This is about how we, as the town, government finance the claims. So instead of paying a premium-based, fully insured plan, it would be a self-insured plan, but a third-party administrator would still process the claims. The hope is that even the appearance of the benefit cards themselves wouldn't change. It might be reissued with different, you know, financial institution information, magnetic strip, but when you see it as a consumer, it would be the same.
Okay.
There are some, I believe 13 pages here. I've read it through once. Governance is the key issue for the attorneys on the board. If you would carefully look at the governance and make sure you're comfortable with it, it basically comes down to one community, one vote. And nobody can join the group unless the existing group admits them, and there is a process for leaving the group with proper notice. The initial step of joining a joint purchasing group for health insurance is to, you have to make sure you have enough cushion to cover your claims and pay for the reinsurance at whatever attachment point we choose. So that's, you know, there's an initial step up which, you know, will be somewhat more costly than simply the rate that we're quoted for, for a working rate. So there is that initial investment. The key thing is, is you're not giving it to insurer. That money is the town's equity in the fund. And the other key part of this agreement is how does the entity deal with equity? So, you know, when, if you decide to leave, you should get a piece of your equity back. If the equity grows, there should be dispensation of equity to offset premiums. That would be the primary purpose of doing it.
Cable reserve fund, too?
Yes, sir. So, we finally got it to the point where there's something for, for you and for the boards of these other communities and the school committee of the regional school district to review. We're looking to have your comments, thoughts by, you know, early to mid-January, so you can just send those to me because you won't have a final document to vote on until all the comments are in. So there's no open meetings issue here. If you send it only to me and not to the whole group, we'll, we'll be listing all the suggested edits and then we'll, we'll parse through them.
Okay.
We, we needed a vehicle to start the conversation. The next item I have for you, my third item, is good news of a kind. The town applied for a small bridge grant for the full rebuild of the Cedar Street Bridge, which is almost like the bridge over the River Kwai, I guess. But the town was successful on the...
Who's playing the role of, of the crazy British Colonel? This is the sound of me not saying anything.
One hand clapping. Upon resubmission, the town was successful. So the town has a grant for $500,000 above and beyond the Chapter 90 funds of the town to replace that, that bridge. The project is contingent upon the engineer's analysis of the existing abutment. If the abutment, which is stone, is weak and needs to be replaced, $500,000 is not going to cover the project. If we can keep the existing abutment and just rebuild the deck over the top of it, we'll have sufficient funds or, or very, very little above and beyond it. Now, this project would be eligible for a designation for Chapter 90 funds. We did not want to do that. We want to pave this year. But it is good news. It is a, a bridge that is in distressed condition and needed to be fixed. So, Mr. Cundev is working on this with the engineer of record, which is, I'm looking for the acronym Greenman-Petersen.
One would lean...
This is the, the little wood slat bridge? $500,000 for that thing?
Yeah.
If it's...
Because you got to get rid of the wood slat part.
Right. I won't just...
Should be in the wood...
I think if you, like, most bridges of this kind, if you park on the side of the road and hop down and go under it, you'll find out it's a little bit more to it. Those are 10 by 10 wooden beams that span, and it is not a culvert. It is a, an abutment that's spanned.
So when do you think we'll know about the abutment to know if it's actually suitable?
Very soon because engineering is part of this, so.
Could always just put a rope in.
Weather permitting, I mean, they got to get in there and look at it.
Sign money for the town, for the general funding of the rope bridge.
Yeah, rope bridge.
So what am I up to, Mr. Chairman? Number four?
Number four.
We digress. I'm trying to hit the deadline here, yes?
You know what the Newport, Newport Bridge costs? I'm just shocked that $500,000.
More than, more than half a million.
More than half.
That's what I just told them.
I'm, I'm fine with it. I believe the numbers.
I just can't believe...
You want a replica of the Newport Bridge?
You will find that I am the only person who will refer to that bridge as the Chaffey Bridge, not the Pell Bridge. John Chaffey was governor when that bridge was proposed.
Could you ask him to get quotes to make it look like the Zachem?
Oh, yeah. There was some discussion of that. No. Anything else, Slidman? Item number four, there was a to-do that came out of our last conversation regarding the driveway proposed for the Glen Street Water Pumping Station and the abutter. There was a request to the town engineer to review the exact checklist that the applicant would have to file. That is in your packet, so that's by way of information. And what is needed, we would still need to go through a procurement, but there's a great deal more that needs to happen from other boards before it comes to you. Planning Board in particular is...
Yeah, this is done at the request of the Water Department, right?
Yes. But that, that to-do was checked off. The other open question from that conversation was whether or not the town could use the material. The answer from Mr. Furno is yes. We do have a place to put it. I assume we would have to meet Conservation Commission requirements for storage of materials, but I don't think it's going to trigger very much discussion because it's, that's an existing pit the town has used for years and years for regrind and waste firewood from trees falling and all the rest of it. My fifth item is the new website. As far as I can tell, all of its functionality has been addressed. So that platform is, is operating. We've been using it. We've tested all of the news flash. We've tested the online payment system and the so-called posting, the community can post ideas or complaints or through what's more or less a blog-type format. Everything is working, so within relatively short order, we will be going back to what the original plan was, which is the old website will appear only as the Bulletin Board. That's the only thing they'll be able to see. There'll be a redirect to the new site and hopefully people will make ample use of it. It is so much easier for us to use as a communication device than the old system that, you know, we'll be posting a tremendous amount of information as we get into budget season and other things. So people who are, really want to be engaged only when the topic of interest to them comes up, you can sign up for the notification service if you're interested in the planning board and you'll get an email reminder that the planning board just posted an agenda. You can open it on your cell phone, see if you want to go or not, and then throw the email away rather than have to dig through all kinds of, it's, it's an attempt by the town to have a proactive, open, civic, transparent platform for people to interact with. The existing website was good. This one really is a lot better. And staff rallied up a little bit, got some things done over the last two weeks. Lastly...
Who's going to police that? If there's some mistruths, half-truths, no-truths being posted?
So really, it's basically no tolerance. If you want to do that stuff, there's Facebook, there's lots of places where you can go back and forth with people and have a debate. The purpose of the website is to post ideas, to get reactions to active live proposals that are before the town or that you think the town should take up.
Just make a fake news column. And that way they can go on that.
Ultimately, you know, our administrators have the permissions to control access to those parts of the website. And if it becomes too much of a problem, we'll just delete the widget. We won't use it at all.
Could you just do one like based off a party? Like Republican, here's the Fox part, here's the CNN part.
Moving right along, Mr. Chairman. For your next agenda...
I'm trying to get the telegram and get it here.
You'll have at least two revised job descriptions, one for the Finance Director, one for the Facilities Manager. We've been going through job evaluations, so we start off with a rewrite of the job description, then we go into the evaluation. So to complete the process, we have to make sure that the board under the personnel bylaw has to approve the job descriptions. And lastly, it is my intention on January 8th, the FinCom's first meeting after the holidays, to interact with that board in terms of revenue estimate. If you do budgeting properly, you budget revenues first, or you estimate revenues first and then budget thereafter. And the thought process is we would have a conversation, a thoughtful conversation about allocation of revenue to capital versus operating. And then from there, we are compiling a personnel supplement. So that is the piece that comes next, which is what are you locked into via contract or employment relationship? And only what's left is what's left for the expense budget. Where will that leave us? I actually think this year, we'll be okay. We'll be fine. But that first step has to be taken and some of those, the policies that lock this into place are a necessary part of the GFOA certification of our budget process. We will need a capital policy, a free cash policy, you know, any number of policies will have to be put in place. GFOA is for the town administration what accreditation is for the police department. All those policies and procedures you had to put in place, we have to put in place around how the town approaches budgeting. And they become a policy to lock everybody into fiscal responsibility for the foreseeable future.
Do you have a flag jacket?
I don't really think, so what you get from all of these discussion groups that have, of people who've already done this, is that once you pre-commit to the policy, everything else kind of falls in because you just don't have a lot of wiggle room. You pre-commit to what you think is the right thing to do and the dollars will fall where they will. And if you want to make changes, you have to cut. So that's kind of the format we want to try to take. We started that way last year with a five-year budget projection, and I'm talking about a capital improvement plan, so we really are, remember, the goal this year is to submit for approval with the expectation that we won't get it, but that we'll make the changes so that next year's budget cycle, we would get the certification. That is all I had, Mr. Chairman.
You saw how well the five-year budget model was embraced and there was not much pushback there.
I think, though, if I've learned anything from all three communities where I've worked, capital is a conversation where people really want to dig in, but even folks who would describe themselves as very conservative budgeting do believe in purchasing proper capital items because it reflects on the ability of the town to deliver the services that it promises. And it's something tangible that a taxpayer can see. I want my roads plowed. There goes a plow. It looks like it's running. It looks like the guy inside has heat and can see out the window. That's a good thing. Take my kids to the park. The park is safe. There's a place to go to the bathroom. There's mulch on the ground. They fall, they don't break their neck. Those are the kinds of things that capital or what Gene likes to call serious long-term maintenance doesn't rise to the level of capital, but it rises to the level of good stewardship of our assets. Those are the conversations we need to have upfront. Now, most communities who do this don't allocate a ton of, of general fund revenues to capital. It may only be 2% or 2.5% or even less. But as long as there's dollars put against it every year and you have, you're not using free cash for operating, you're using free cash for capital, the financial picture of the town turns around very rapidly. But if we were missing anything, going into the Moody's Evaluation of the Town's debt issue, it was policies.
So I guess that brings us to old business. Gene is not. Only new business.
Well, old business, I just want to point out, I almost died again today in front of the post office pulling out of Route 16.
We'll try harder.
We keep paying that guy and he just keeps missing.
No, it's, I really, I can't make it up. It happened around 12 o'clock. I don't think DOT-style signs are the answer, but you do go to other communities and there's flashing crosswalk signs and, and things that potentially could be done. Even non-DOT signs that just remind people that we're entering a village area. I don't have the solution as to where they are, but I think we should spend some time looking into that.
Is there a standard to be met for, you're thinking of a flashing crosswalk sign like at White Machine Works in Northbridge?
Yeah?
Yeah, something like that.
I think there might be. I think DOT might have to do with the actual study where they put the traffic counts across the road. I think there's some, we might have to jump through with DOT, but I'll get with John and have a discussion there and see who we can contact and get more information on that. There may be something we need to do before we can make that decision, but we'll get the information and get the wheels started.
Because the other thing would be, you don't necessarily want it on all the time. I know the one at White Machine Works is on all the time.
You can either time it. You can do it manually or...
Motion.
You can set them now, so, but I think a lot of that falls on the DOT. Anytime you try and go and change a speed limit or you have a suggestion for it, they have to come out, they have to do their actual study. They won't even take our numbers that we can use. We're doing the same thing. We're counting the same cars. They just, they have to do their study before they'll approve anything. But I'll get with John this weekend and see what we can do.
Thank you.
That off for old business?
Yeah. I didn't even think of bringing that up. The spirit just moved me to, so it's probably a good idea.
So I get, I get two things for new business. First thing is the guy that keeps almost killing Tim, we got to pay him more. Get him a little extra...
We'll get our money back.
Yeah, exactly. He owes us a refund. Just kidding, Tim. We wouldn't want to see anything bad happen to him. Maimed a little, but never killed. This is the last meeting that we have for the new year, so to our 11 viewers on public access, Merry Christmas from the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen or whatever holiday you choose to celebrate.
Merry Christmas. Have a great holiday season. Happy, Happy New Year, too.
Happy New Year. Don't forget your executive session.
And I'm waiting for a very special Tim Bonan motion.
Well, in the spirit of the holiday season...
Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt you just for a second. It is our hope, I think, to have at least one vote. Do we have to come back out to announce a vote?
We never had to before.
Ever have to? That's a word I own thing.
Yeah.
The coffee syrup for the...
And even if we did, we're, we usually do it. It's not done on camera again.
The floor is yours, Mr. Bonan.
Did that throw you off, this?
No, no, it didn't.
Give me what's happened, man.
He's ready now.
I would like to make a motion that we move from general session to executive session for the purposes of potential litigation and real property and to leave executive session for the purpose of adjournment and the beginning of the holiday season.
This was made by Tim and seconded by Mike. Roll call vote, please.
Mike, you say?
Tim Bonan, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye. Al Davis, aye.
Dave Cortez, aye.